Alright, we are recording public workers' meetings. July. Nine. Six o'clock. Everyone would like to please speak in a public forum? Nobody? Um, we have minutes from the June 11th meeting and the June 25th executive session.
Motion to accept.
Which one? Both?
Oh, sorry, uh. Six eleven.
Yeah, we do both together.
Can we accept the, uh?
Yes.
Where we all?
Executive, alright.
Yes, we don't have to go into the executive session just to accept it as long as there's no discussion.
Alright, good. I'll second it anyways.
Alright, motion second in all favor.
Alright.
Aight.
Now we turn over to superintendents.
Superintendents. They want to go.
Nice.
Oh, superintendents?
What's that with Bruce?
So I put in for the, uh, project request through the, uh, mascot to for the chapter ninety work for the summer, uh. That online thing they have now does, uh, do the project test is awesome. They, uh, I think three days later. An email back, project request was okay. So, uh, I think it was six hundred and forty seven thousand dollars worth of roadwork, including my estimated details. So. Kenwood and Holg, uh, we have a section at Kenwood that my guys are gonna dig out down to the gravel and then we're gonna put some gravel in and then grade it and then they'll come to a finish grade because it was just too blown up and the rest of it's gonna do like an overlay for that section. It's just very little traffic, but it's like really bad street. And then the rest, uh, the rest of the money is Davis Ave, Whitman Ave from Washington down to Blake Court Charles and then like a small section of Park Ave from the Park Ave School Curve. It's a south ave. It's all blown up in there. And, um, that's six fifty and when that's all said and done, we may look at like, maybe like, do we have enough to do? Like an old self ave is a mess. I know it doesn't get driven on a lot, but it's like goes behind that diamond fuel.
Yeah.
Or some short section, like the section from the railroad tracks by Franklin Street to the East Bridgewater line. Essentially goes over the, the culvert. That's what Whitman owns right there. It's a mess. It's only like a hundred yards. But, you know. So that's done. We were notified. I think I sent that out to them. Well, we were notified. I kind of forgot all about it that I applied for, but we got, um. We're gonna get free, uh, of the pedestrian crossing signals, solar power.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Good start.
Yeah.
One, uh, gonna go at Regal, that self ave, self ave at Regal and the other one's, uh, right in front of the town hall, like the cross from, not where everybody crosses near the post office. At the corner of Davis Ave and the cross from central, cause that's at the actual crosswalk there, cause that's curb cuts. The other one has no curb cuts. So we can't put the signs unless we built curb cuts and that would. We could do that, but it would cause a mess with parking in front of the, uh, the town hall and the post office. We'd probably lose two spots. So we're just gonna do it where the actual crosswalk, where people are supposed to cross.
Those are activated, what? Those are the dual flashing lights or whatever you push the button to cross. Yeah.
But we even saw a couple of rounds down where they're like, like low budget, like they go on street signs. These are gonna be the bigger ones.
Right.
They talk to each other, you know, you push the button.
Yeah, they flick on both sides, yeah.
Uh, well, you know, we have to do the install. Uh, so similar to when we did the ones on Temple Street, we have to put like sonar tubes down there and cement.
Yeah.
Put, uh, temp lit on there with the bolts and everything. But that's a good thing.
Yeah.
Um.
Please be happy.
Yeah.
Make them happy.
Just doing some roadwork, uh. Tipful, trying to keep up with pocket tree stuff with vacations and everything and, um. I, I sent an email to you all just before the meeting tonight that I just got today, which is, I'm gonna have to look into it tomorrow. It's kind of interesting where Mary Beth was talking about setting the trash rate based on and, and, uh, creating an enterprise account with the trash and raising. Well, we're gonna raise the trash rates anyway, because every year they go up. So trash rates will like, when we set the trash rate and the bills go up and fall, they'll be higher than they what they were this year. They have to because the rate goes up every year. But it sounds like they wanna add more to it, uh, and charge indirect costs for the trash to the trash rate. I gotta find out more about it. I got an email today while, and I was out today. It was on boat today, but I read the, uh, you, you guys will see the email on there. What you see in that email is all I know too, first I've heard of it. So I have to talk to Mary Beth just.
When she says indirect.
Me, I'm not really in favor of. An enterprise account for the trash wouldn't be a terrible thing.
Right.
But. I mean, in my opinion, the trash, we, we're not in the trash business to make money. Like, where are they? I don't, I don't know what she's. You know, vision for there, right?
Yeah.
At the end of the email, she's looking for all kinds of ways to raise revenue. And I'm like, people would be like.
Oh, yeah.
Mad enough, they're mad enough when we go up on the trash rates just to cover the cost of the trash.
Yeah.
Now, yeah. So now they're gonna, now we're talking about raising the trash rates, not just to, not just to cover the increases contractually in market, but to cover some other costs. Raise revenue.
Yeah, yeah. How are you gonna raise revenue if it's a enterprise account? You can raise revenue and put an enterprise account, but then you only can use it for trash.
Right.
I'm, I'm, I'm not in favor of even an enterprise account because it's not like, you know, we don't.
What do we gotta do with money?
We don't have any costs.
Right.
You have the cost of disposal, period.
Well, we, we, it's correct. We, we do, we have been incurring more and more costs each year because of the, the cost of repairing the cots, more and more manpower. I mean, that more so sees the slips in the cars that come in. We get stacks like this of slips where I have, you know, two crews go out and just repair lids, barrels, replace barrels. I just bought as soon as the fiscal year got here, like the second day of July, I ordered thirty four hundred dollars worth of, uh, black cots, just replacement cots that are getting broken.
Waste management doesn't supply those?
We get fifteen hundred dollars a year from waste manager for pots, or we could buy cots with it that doesn't get here for a while.
They supply the ones.
Yeah.
There's a lot of ones.
Once each, each contractual year.
Yeah.
We have fifteen hundred dollars for that, which I can, I'll spend that too, but like, what did I buy? Fifty cots and
Fifty lids.
Fifty lids and it was thirty four hundred dollars. And that, that comes out of the solid waistline. But like my guy's working on the cots all day and a lot of the issues too, which I'm gonna stop probably having, put a foot down a little more on it. Like, people getting dingy too is, uh, the trash cots. Well, my trash cat has holes in it. It has holes in it because squirrels or rodents, it's mostly squirrels and chewing holes, particular holes in the coves or in the sides to get to the garbage. That's not our fault. You have a squirrel problem or a rodent problem. I, I sent that email back to a guy cause he was pissy and I said, you have a rodent problem. I go, why should we buy a seventy dollar pack for you because you have a rodent problem? Or you're not putting your trash in a bag like it should be. Like that might hide the smell a little bit.
Yeah.
I never have squirrels get in my trash. Like, and I have tons of squirrels running around. I don't know why they don't chew hold through my cots. So.
Likewise, yeah.
So.
Anyway.
A few things in trash, I, I don't support an enterprise account. I mean, indirect costs, someone would have to show me what those are.
Yeah, like billing.
Yeah, some, like you said, or the repairs.
And, and as much as the, the select board makes the rate, we get the hit.
Right.
And I don't want the PR hit. I, you know, we, we, we increase it to cover the contract.
Yeah, we already did.
Um. As far as the carts. Um. You know, maybe it's something, like you said, we get a little more strict and we create a policy that, you know, if it's deemed abuse and that's obviously a open-ended.
Right.
You need to purchase a cart.
And we do do that. And like if somebody, if somebody calls and says, oh, I don't know where my cot is. Like, why are you gonna buy a new one? What do you mean, you know, where? If we think that if it gets crushed by the arms of God.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We've had people call and they have seen the cart get dropped into the trash truck, getting the trash picked up.
Oh, like it slid out?
Yeah. Or the lid comes off and goes right into the. Oh, okay. We can replace lids, but then you get things like, like people who like on a stormy night, they, they leave, they don't bring the barrels right back.
Yeah, and then they get boiled away, yeah.
On the street, you run over by a truck.
Yeah.
It's not our fault.
Yep.
So I think if we gotta be a little more pay, you know, it, you know, unless it's wear and tear. Yeah, the thing just wore out. Yeah, that happens, especially now where probably what, four or five years, eight, really eight years, okay?
Really?
Right, you mean, I, I, you know, I mean, I look, I mean, I can put them in the garage, so it's sort of, we probably last a little longer. But not everyone has that ability. A lot of people don't have that ability. So I'm not gonna fault someone if.
Yeah, I just store mine under my deck. I mean, they're out there in all kinds of weather, yeah. And that's what happens to them. I mean, I watched the truck with that goddamn arm, the way he crushed them, yeah.
When we, when we take in, so if we do charge somebody for a cot, which, you know, it's not that rare that we do it.
Yeah.
Uh, most people accept it. Yeah, well, you're gonna have to buy a new one. But when we take in, what do we charge him? Seventy five?
Seventy five.
We charging seventy five dollars for a cot, we take in that seventy five dollars, it goes to the general fund.
Right. See that, I don't understand.
It doesn't go to solid waste, cause solid waste isn't a revolving or enterprise.
Right, so that would be the only.
Okay, alright, I get you.
To have an enterprise account, I guess, that.
Right.
Cause you can then take in revenue.
Right. And it's, but it's.
Yeah, just like the sewer water and sewer, yeah.
So I gotta see what she has in mind, cause I, I kind, I agree, like I would wanna just set the rate at what we need, what we need to charge everybody to pay the bills.
Sure.
And not anything extra at this point.
I, I would.
Yeah.
As much as, you know, you are spending labor and you're, and you're taking your salary line item to do solid waste. Would never gone to that level.
No.
Next, next trash contract, we will, because we're gonna have that issue a little more, we'll look for more help from waste manager or whoever gets the contract with cot replacement.
Yeah, we, maybe, yeah, bump it up or say every year twenty carts or, you know, you know what I mean?
Or, or even because they'll be ten years old at that point, we say, in the new contract, say it's a three-year contract or five-year contract, we'll say, say it's a three-year contract, first year of contract, replace one-third of the town's cots.
Yep.
Cause they bought the cots to begin with.
That's true, yeah.
You know, and then once they bought them, we all, we all.
Sure.
Yeah.
Which was great. They went out and bought forty seven hundred cents of cots.
Well, the quantity they buy too, they probably get it for.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, discount.
No, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
I think that's something, something you write in the RFP.
Right.
You know, when we put that together.
That's a good idea.
You know?
Yeah.
You, we're at that.
Three-year contract each year, you replace one-third of the whole fleet of cots. And, um, that way we're starting out new again.
Yeah. Yeah, but you're talking every three years though, you're gonna be doing that? I mean, and you're only doing a third of the town?
Ten years.
No, but if you're only doing a third of the town and the contract is three years.
Yeah, so it's one, two, three, and then.
Oh, okay.
End of their contract, which means ten or eleven years into the program.
Gotcha.
Everyone's got a new cart and we're good for another.
I got you. Alright.
We're good for another ten plus years, maybe.
I got you. Alright.
Yeah, wouldn't have to do it. But that's better than, it seems like the nickel dime approach doing the other way too.
Couple of the questions. Whitman Ave, we gonna do any sidewalk or just roadway?
Just roadway. Well, the, the elevation of the road now, especially from the town hall to a bulk just before the pool, there's quite a bit of difference between the sidewalk and the street. So we're gonna have to do like a, like a monolithic burn to get rid of that womb plot. Cause it just erodes anyway. We'll go right from the street up to the existing sidewalk. Everybody on that street, like this couple of month family houses and they don't park up in the driveway. One resident told me like, oh, I landed a toilet so we couldn't park in the driveway.
Right, yeah.
But yeah, the big drive, so. Anyway, well, that, but yeah, that will be, but no sidewalk work. Um.
Not even the area that's all sand, that's never been done over the past fifty years or so.
Oh, but there's no sidewalk at all?
Like from. Well, there's a sidewalk, but it's just sand. It's just dirt.
Well, there's no sidewalk from Maple Ave all the way up to Haynes.
That's what I mean, yeah. That, that portion, that's where I'm referring to.
The park.
That's just grass.
Okay, so that you don't bother because it's the park, okay, in the town.
They're blocking the gravel in the park anyway, so if you do a land on the park, they're on gravel paths and that's a gravel path. Um.
Side where there is sidewalk, but you got great difference in that sidewalks and stuff.
I just figured where there's homes on the other side and there is no sidewalk on the opposing side. So.
Well, they have sidewalks in front of the houses on, uh, on the office.
On Whitman Ave?
Yeah.
Do they?
Concrete, old, you know, it's just like all the other side, sure, yeah.
Yeah, I know. Alright, yeah, yeah.
Because of that grade difference.
It'd be nice, like if we can see, if that's something the board wants to look into doing sidewalks there. Once we find out if we get that, um, grant, the complete streets grant for the half a million to do sidewalks on Plymouth Street. If we do not get that grant, we can use sidewalk money that we have, according from town meeting, to maybe do a section of sidewalk along there. If we get the grant, I think we're gonna have to use that sidewalk money to pay for engineering to do the complete streets job.
Yeah, right. Okay. Oh, wow.
Which still be probably quite a bit, cause it.
Yeah. But it costs quite a bit, yeah, for the complete streets too.
You know, what, the projects would be covered by the five hundred thousand, like the engineer would.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have to kick in.
Just on your push button lights, I have no idea, but if that's the, like, a traffic base, you know, for all traffic signals, if it's the same bolt pattern, you can get those precast.
That'd be nice, yeah.
Right, precast specialties right in Abington.
Oh, okay.
It's, it's a mast dot standard, you know, that fits every, you know, fits the, whatever, the eight and ten foot, you know, traffic pedestals.
Yeah.
I, I, I have no idea if it's the same.
That's easier.
Be nice, you know. But then they're shorties and they're only like.
Dropping. Oh, really?
Like, maybe twenty inches.
Oh.
Oh, you don't need the four feet?
Nope. So obviously mixing a little easier.
Yeah, way easier.
Probably cost you a hundred fifty bucks for the piece of precast.
Hey.
So just something to see if it's the same bolt pattern. It might be, you know, with that bolt kind of a, a traffic base type thing.
Yep. I mean, I'm sure they send me all that, especially once we take delivery, cause they just drop them off here and say you got sixty days or something.
Um, you mentioned Franklin Street. Was there something with Hanson to walk through?
I met with Hanson's new superintendent about, you know, how much money he hadn't, you know, if he was interested in maybe repaving Franklin Street and figuring out exactly who owned what between the two towns and then just having like Edwards come in and mill and pave the whole thing from like, you know, Rowena and down to where I was talking about over to the tracks and over the tracks to East Bridgewater Line. He said he already had like his money kind of spent for the year, but we would revisit it in the fall when these projects are done at Opera. Cause the majority of it is hits. Like mine would be like what I was talking about, like from the tracks to the East Bridgewater Line and then on, on the other side of the tracks, closest to the high school, maybe, you know, a hundred feet is Whitman. It, it isn't really even that much, but, um. It's kind of very strange layout up there.
Well, yeah. And people just probably assume it's Whitman.
Yeah.
Even though the sign's way back at the high school, it says you're crossing into Hanson.
Right. The bobble filling bottles up there and I go, that's Hanson. And he goes, yeah, those are all Whitman residents.
It's weird. True, yeah. Yeah, right there.
Yeah. Any other questions for Bruce?
No?
Dave, what do you got?
I'm ready.
I'm just moving.
So, so just to keep getting you guys up, so the Auburn Street pump station, so last week, Greenwich and Sons came in and they hooked up the bypass last week, so it was up and operational. It's not operating, but it was there just in case it's there, something happened.
Yeah.
We took delivery of the pots for the repair today. So they're looking to start the repairs tomorrow, so we'll shut down Auburn Street and they'll start doing the repairs. If everything goes well, they should be done by the middle of next week.
So it's Greenwich?
Uh, yeah, Greenwich.
Greenwich, yeah.
Greenwich out of Salem.
Yep.
And Silences, so it was not, cause they, they had D Camp certified too, so it makes it easier with everything, uh.
That's great.
So that's where we stand with that. You know, I'll keep, you know, we're trying to work out, we're trying to use, we had like three hundred and some, well, just under three hundred thousand in opera money left over. We're trying to see if we can use that to pay for it. If not, I do have an article left from the sewer force main that I believe we can use. We'll look at all this. If not, it'll come out of water with retained earnings or whatever, but I think move like between opera and an article I have, we can use without. We can might be able to use that.
Uh, cause if we can't come out of those, doesn't the select board have to vote or something for making a merger?
Yeah, this Mary Beth, I've been working, talking to Mary Beth and Kathy Keefe about it. We're just trying to figure out, would like to try to use the opera money. We might have to turn in the opera money and then resubmit for the opera money to be able to use it for that, but it, you know, but. Yeah. Without having to. It's still probably the same project.
Without having to.
That's a question in general. I mean, if we got three hundred thousand dollars in opera money, we wanna spend it.
Well, that's, yeah, exactly. So where's?
This is nowhere near three hundred grand.
They said that it has to be for the sewer force main project, so we're trying to work, see if, because Auburn, Auburn Station is connected to the.
Yeah, I understand that, but you spend fifty thousand dollars and there's still two fifty left. There has to be some agreement, exactly like you said, that it gets returned and then gets issued back. And I know it has to be utility work.
Yep.
So unfortunately, we can't go pave a road.
Right.
But.
Yeah.
We have other utility work that can be done and that's a pretty broad, you know?
Yep.
Doesn't have to, you know?
The amount of money that we have for opera money is gonna, we're still gonna need to pull money out of either the, an article or what to pay for it, cause it's, I think it's three hundred and.
It says it was like two sixty.
Yeah, three sixty something for it.
Oh, for this repair?
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, yeah. So the, the opera money's gonna help, but we're still gonna need more bucks to add to that.
Yeah.
So that's where we stand with that. Um, so the I, our I and I program, uh, appropriated a certain amount of money, like fifty thousand to do it. Uh, the bid closed at two o'clock today. We got four bidders and National Water Main came in at thirty six thousand and we estimated fifty, so we're gonna come and. Well into that. They're gonna do like five manholes, but that's gonna save us like almost eight million gallons a year.
That's great.
Going into our sewer system.
Yeah.
Um, I had an onsite visit with Xylem to upgrade our bioxide system. So, and that should hopefully be coming within the next probably a couple of months. So.
What's the estimate on that?
I appropriated a hundred and twenty thousand. I, right, as of right now, I think it's gonna be like a hundred and seventeen.
Oh, okay.
But that, that's upgraded to the.
Yeah, to the full capacity.
Best system you can get. And that means I can monitor, I can adjust everything from here. They, it's an automatic delivery system. They monitor it. They get keys to the gate. It's twenty-four hour delivery. It'll help with the costs. A gallonage, so.
Yeah.
Right, you take, you're taking a bigger delivery, so you get it cheaper.
We get full truckload deliveries and especially the twenty-four hour, twenty-four seven delivery makes it easier for the truck divers. It can come in and out, all it, whatever.
Oh, okay.
Residents won't complain? I know this.
Well, there's only that one, really, it's just that one house on the corner. The guy's really nice. You mean, he's, you know.
I don't know how noisy, you know, it involves like pumps and stuff with the guy.
The pump, like, the pump actually on the truck is to pump it into the tank is actually not as loud as the truck idling.
Really? Oh, wow.
So it's, it's, you know.
Yeah.
I think we'll, I think we'll be fine.
Okay, good.
So that, then that project, uh, other than that, I mean, we've been out there, we had another water break on Diarrhea. Uh, which blew apart a good portion of the asphalt.
Wow.
So that's gonna be another, like, what was the other one? Like thirteen, fifteen thousand to pave?
Yeah. I, I didn't know if you wanted to touch base on possibly doing.
Well, yeah, I did. Yeah, I did reach out to Apex Andrew to get a cost of replacing that water main, because when we were fixing it, 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 it looks really corroded, like it's just failing on the outside and it, cause it was a lateral crack and it blew up from the top of the pipe.
Oh, man, yeah.
So.
So last time they had a water main right down there, blew the road up pretty good. We went out and got a, got estimates from local driveway companies, really.
Yeah.
And then we, there was, I think Dennis did an article, right? Said, so we had them pay that, cause it was.
Right.
A big area, it was more than what we could do with handbags.
Yeah.
And same thing with this area now, it's the width of the road by.
Probably a hundred feet, uh, fifty, fifty, two hundred.
So now do we bother doing that again? Throw money at a, with the road exploding it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, but, I mean, if anything, I'm just gonna have to, I'll do a article for the special town meeting to have it paved, so doesn't kill me and my operating budget.
Might you got another special town meeting in October, November this year?
Sounds like there will be a.
Yeah, it sounds like there will be, so.
Okay.
If so, I'll put an article in for that.
Yeah.
Other than that, that's, you know, where we stand with that?
Alright. Um. Sicconi? NHR, can we get that on the agenda for next meeting and if we need to go executive session and bring Peter here and talk about it or?
So I, I'll share some correspondence back and forth, uh, between, so Nancy's doing it.
Um. Okay.
Through the law firm. Uh, so there was correspondence earlier this week between Nancy and Mayor Beth. And they, you know, CCBR, just, she wanted particulars of what the lease was, what day of the month they paid it, how much it was. Cause she wants to terminate, she had to have that all in there, so, uh, sounds like, I mean, it's pretty simple. That maybe I already heard all that information before, so. I think the letter will probably go out. I'd be surprised if it doesn't go up this week or next week.
And it's gonna have what in August? So we decided?
Yeah, we.
End of August. End of August to kind of coincide with opening. Okay, alright, so it's in process, it's moving and.
Yeah.
Do you want, um, for August meeting?
Let's just, yeah, put it on the agenda just so if I don't remember, we can at least, you know, the letter goes, it's fine, or at least get an update.
Right.
You know?
Push back, we can.
Yeah, just.
He's not only, you know, he seems like he just wants to give, we, we bought some manhole covers and kit, can't space and frames and grates off this week. I mean, you got a good price. Buck fifty for a sap, you know?
Not the whole drop inlet, just the frame of grate.
Frame.
Yeah.
Cast iron frame.
Very good, sure.
Yeah.
Yep. Think they go for about eight hundred now?
Yeah, they're, they're up there. We got nine hundred.
And you're gonna, you're gonna wait about fourteen weeks?
Oh, geez.
I mean, these are, they've been sitting in these yachts a little rusty.
Yeah. So what?
It's, it doesn't matter.
Doesn't go bad. It's cast.
Some salt on it.
Okay.
Yeah, they're like almost six hundred bucks a piece, brand new.
Um. Only other, we have our building committee meeting Monday, so I don't know, you guys probably know more than I know, but I've been read meeting in the chat for a while.
Yeah, me.
Um, I think everybody knows they found an oil tank when they were digging the.
Uh, yeah.
Seastern out there. So we're dealing with that, but also our environmental people are dealing with that. And, uh, we'll see where that goes, but. Yeah, but that's the only thing we found, which it was, and it's not a huge deal.
And they started the, um, underground. Yep. Storage tanks, so I figured, I didn't ask.
Yeah, I mean, it's all, it's all, it's all stoned.
Some kind of clearance.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, there's a couple piles back. Yeah. That are covered, so obviously that's the.
Correct.
But they're at least, they're still working, so.
At least it's not like they're still digging.
Right, the scheduled delay. Was minimal if any, you know. There was a delay, but I don't think it was more than probably a few days before. They were back to work now, they're just slow. So I don't know what. I don't know how they look for July thirty first, or actually, wasn't July fifteenth?
No, I think they went to, they made it July thirtieth. Cause when I talked to Peter today, matter of fact. He said he's looking to have it finished paved by the end of the month. So we're gonna have to get everything, the cement pile and all that stuff, he was talking about getting all that stuff moved out or onto the dirt just to. So they can see, so I'm assuming that they're shooting for the thirtieth.
More of a building committee thing, but. We were talking about like how the fence was gonna be and. Yeah, we want, we wanted to confirm that the fence is gonna go from the gate. Up to this corner of the building, so people can't just walk around the fence. The gate can get in, and it is. But there's no fence on this side of the building going from that back corner to like at least the wood line or something, so that might be something. We need to look at as building committee and also. The fence gets all replaced all around the fuel depot, but from the fuel depot down to the construction entrance. No new fence. It's not in the plan, I'm like, so that old rickety fence they we're using as the construction entrance is gonna stay unless unless we. We could always do it after the fact with our own fence, because you like, obviously everything.
He didn't have that going down?
He said no, because we, he pulled up the plan and, because I asked him specifically about this and something out here. And at first he said, no, I don't think there's anything going in the building, but I walked over, he looked at, he goes, yeah, there is, but down the other end. Around the fuel depot, yes, but from the fuel depot going back towards like the community garden and where the construction entrance is, no.
So but at a minimum, they gotta put the construction back, entrance back like it was. They removed fence there to make that construction entrance, correct? That was just an entrance? Do we need to replace the fence around the fuel depot? No, I know, but but is that fence in decent enough shape that we could say, hey, no, okay, alright. Don't do this, do that, I mean, footage is footage.
We just say do your fence thing and then like.
We just do it as part of the project, especially this, this. This, eh, we'll see, you know, but you're not talking. You know what I mean, just do it.
The fence behind us with the silicone, you can't do anything, if he's planning on paving and having all the fence done by the. End of this month, we can't do anything with the section for silicone till the end of next month, correct?
Talking right here.
Well, that we own, that right now, Sicconi has his stuff on. Once he moves everything. And he's out of there, we're gonna fence that in too, aren't we, or no?
I mean, if their new owner wants to run a fence along their property line, which will be way over by their garage here, their gray building. But no, we'll just.
We don't have a fence now, between us and Sicconi here. Like right up back here?
And then there's one that runs along their lease line. Out behind the dog pound that runs that way. But, you know, we would just make an opening in that fence probably, that that's been there, because we're gonna make an access road like. This side of the. Dog pound to go up in there to, you know, have our laid out area.
Yeah, I'd say whatever over here we probably look at later. You know, depends what, you know, no one really knows what's happening.
When I pointed over here before, I just meant like from this corner of the building to the wood line, like at an angle, just so people couldn't just. Come in that driveway and walk into our yard.
People still can't drive in, you could just walk. We're still recording, um, Dave, or is this Melissa? There's an email here, I'm not gonna go into it, because there's some personal stuff here that I don't feel should be read in a public meeting. But it's basically from a resident. Sounds like they're having some challenges, making ends meet. And paying their, in particular, their water bills, and they're looking for some leniency on interest. Now, I guess. Fortunately, we can't make any decisions on that. I mean, that's the town accountant's office.
We have, but they like they'll do something, but they need something from us. To tell them to don't judge the resident the interest.
Right, we've, we've done it, someone had a huge water bill. And they came in and say. You know, I can't pay it all at once, and you know, we say, unfortunately, we can't do anything if it went through the meter, you gotta pay for it. And but we can say waive the fees, I mean.
That's usually like after some kind of catastrophic.
Right, right, and and we, you know, they get on a payment plan. I mean, you guys can can.
That account too, when they've never been late ever paying their bill either until that.
I mean, I have no problem personally. You know, it sounds like they've had some bad times and I'm always wanting to try to help someone and it's, you know, it sounds like they've been a. Good citizen, paid their bills and they're just kind of running into some bad luck. You know, I, me, I mean, the board thinks if you guys wanna send up a letter, you know what you wanna do to waive the fees. I can't imagine it's that that much, it's only one bill.
Just gonna say, you know what we're talking about, with one, but not.
It's the, it's the. October and this bill now, it's a little over a hundred dollars.
Right, but this bill now probably just started. Right, in the October bill, obviously, he has a few months. It's probably something plus. Well, no, it's a percentage, it's, but even that percentage is probably like. It's probably not even a set number, maybe it is a set number.
Waive the interest if you were even making small payments.
Yeah, I was gonna say, like, you think down there, we wouldn't have.
Keep making payments wherever you're comfortable.
Well, and and maybe that's. Again, this isn't a situation, this is a situation, you know, people in some. Bad streets, I guess. Of course, now going past precedents.
I was just gonna say, if you do this for him. This time, if he had two in a year from now, he comes back again and say, well, you did it for us. That time, can you do it for me again?
Or anybody? Like I said, when we've done it in the past, it's been people that had. People had a leak, they had a, you know, water tank, they had, someone left the hose running in the backyard. Right, they were gonna be paying the bill over time. And we would waive the fees.
Wouldn't that be something that they'd talk to the town hall, not so much us?
Well, I think they're looking for our input because it's our money. Right, I mean, those fees go, all this goes into the enterprise account.
Yes, okay, I agree, yeah.
So we're the managers of that.
Started at the town hall and was sent down here. And we asked to send it in an email, so.
Because we're, we're the managers of that account, it's our money. So, you know.
Can we just say we can let them go on a payment plan and send it back, I mean, not state how much or whatever, I mean, I don't know.
So the bill is not so much for him to pay.
I I would support it, I would make a motion, just. Like Kevin said.
I know, well, you could state in a letter that, you know, we will do this for this for this resident one time only, will not set precedents.
But it's one thing, but that's one resident.
Yeah, what if others come in and say, hey?
Let me go interest free.
Exactly, yeah.
I feel for him.
I mean, it it's different than someone just like totally, whatever, being ignorant or forgetting, but. Then again, they're saying we don't know, maybe the story's true or not.
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not questioning. I'm just saying, there's plenty of people, well, not even that, there's plenty of people that. Are challenged with paying their bills. For whatever reason. You know. And and like I said, I think this is what, that's what this is. And this is a little different than. Someone who just got a really big bill because of. Whatever, and and we have done that in the past, we have waived interest and late fees, you know, for the people that, you know. Things like this, I'm. Unfortunately, I.
Yeah, I feel for the poor guy, I mean, what he's going through with his kid or whatever, but still, I mean, it's. You know, how 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 do, well, I can understand how he can neglect it, but I mean. Yeah, or some kind of flat rebate that we can swallow.
Still pay the late fees, don't pay the interest.
Yeah, that's what I think he's saying, like, just the interest.
I think he's looking for anything, you know what I mean, I I I don't wanna.
Just anything to help him, yeah.
He understands, hey, he, you know, they use the water or whatever, they gotta pay for it. You know, he's just.
Late fee right now, like you said, I think it's like a hundred, it's a hundred bucks.
Not a lot, but it's something, like.
And my guess is probably the majority of it is the October bill. Like you said, because the other one isn't that far. Month, maybe.
Late fee, interest, to be, how much interest we look, it usually accumulates over the period of six months.
About a hundred bucks.
Oh, the hundred bucks is the late.
An estimate of a hundred bucks, the total of what the interest and late fee.
You're not working, a hundred's a lot.
The late fee is, I'm assuming, a set fee. So most of it's the.
I mean, um. Feeling like we're setting a precedent. Only thing. I would wanna. We feel bad, but you gotta get your stuff together. We can state that we can, yeah, we can waive the late fee and the interest. Like Dave said, one time, without setting the precedent, so. No, I know. Yeah, I know, I just.
This is where, you know, I'm struck between my moral compass and my. Policy and procedure, and and it's, and it's. It stinks. I'm being recorded, it stinks that.
Form too, I mean, so that he doesn't. Get other people to, you know. Say anything or whatever. I mean.
We're in a public meeting. I guess I could. Entertain a partial. With obvious some stipulations.
Motion for a partial with stipulations. What's what's acceptable.
You know. We waive the late fees, pay the interest, waive the interest, pay the late fees. More inclined to. Have him pay the late fee and waive the interest. Obviously, that's a little.
That seems punitive.
You know, cause he admits, you know, he just forgot about it, or, you know, again, had. I feel for him.
Yeah, I mean, there's people that probably wouldn't even try, like, they're just trying to like duck and. Yeah, no, you're right. Be supportive of as a town, I think, of attempting to make a reconciliation.
Someone wanna make a motion?
Dave just did. Okay.
To recommend to the town, the collector, that. We waive the interests. Do, but not the actual late fee.
With some specific stipulations?
This is with the one time only.
One time only, yeah.
On the October and the March, what is the other bill? On the October twenty four and April twenty five.
Okay, I'll second that. Come on, if Joe was here, he'd probably let you. Yeah, I know, yeah. He would, so, yeah.
I don't know, he actually, sometimes very.
No, he's, he's.
Add. Pending at least a payment plan. You know, me, because if if the April doesn't get paid, it's just gonna keep incurring interest that we're not getting. Kind of what we're done with others, a payment plan. You know what I mean, there's, if it twenty five bucks. You know, a month or what, you know, some type of payment plan agreed upon with the treasurer's office, like we've done with other people. You know, so at least they're paying something.
I accept his amendment.
And I can kind of call tomorrow and let him know what the board decided. And I'll send it up there and kind of see maybe what he can afford to pay every month or something and then.
I don't even know if we wanna know.
Yeah, I I I think, I think at that point, let him. We get the motion second and all favor? Alright, alright, I think. The that, the dollar amount, he should just work with the treasurer's office directly, we typically don't get involved. We we just say, we we have voted, you know, and so we're gonna have to draft up a letter. For a signature, let me know, I can swing by and sign it. That, you know, waive interest incurred. Uh, in interest incurred to date and going forward on the two invoices, this is what should be in the letter. The resident will pay the late fees. You know, pending an agreed upon payment plan discussed with the treasurer's office or whoever, collector's office, whoever, whoever handles it. And that way, they know what the deal is too. And, you know, if if they come back to you guys in three months and say, you know what? They haven't done anything, they haven't made any payments, they haven't talked to us, well, then guess what? The interest is gonna be back on the table.
I'll do that letter tomorrow.
Google one year for five years.
Yeah, I hear a lot of people, they they'll write the letter and they use chat G P T to just kind of. Fine tune it, because obviously, I'm sure you can tell like a letter that was totally created by.
I did a letter for the complete treats project, the narrative of like, so I did the letter. For that grant, and then I had it, like, make it sound better. Well, we'll see if it works.
I mean, you thought it made it better. There we go, good.
Luckily, I don't have to do that. Alright, anything else, next meeting will be. August thirteenth? Yeah, August thirteenth. I think I'll be here.
It's a Wednesday? August thirteenth, yeah, it's Wednesday, that's the date.
I don't know if I'll be here. Find out. Actually, I think I will be here.
I don't have it yet.
Yes, I will be here.
I'll be on vacation.
You'll be on vacation, okay.
Maybe the next week I won't be around, I don't know. My plans are pretty fluid.
They have like six weeks vacation.
But it's more, it's, it's, it's a fluid. Like we just, alright, let's finish the meeting, alright, anything else? I'll send a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second it.